Okay. We have a full board. This is the February 16th, 2023, meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. All members are present, including our liaison Denise Donnelly is also present. And we will start the meeting with a public comment period, which is comments relating to any issues concerning planning. We also have a second public comment period toward the end of the meeting. And in this particular meeting, we're also going to have an executive session at the very end of the meeting, which will basically be to discuss pending litigation. And then we will just proceed to adjourn after that executive session is completed. So I'll start with the public comment period. Any, anybody have any public comment relating to planning tonight? No hands up, Mr. Moderator?
Jason, I have two, one from Laura Fillmore Evans and one from Denise Donnelly.
Okay. Right, Ms. Fillmore?
Hi, my name is Laura Evans from 77 High Street. And following this special town meeting, we thought that there looks like there's a need in town for some information, objective facts and information about affordable housing. So some concerned citizens and I have put together a Rockport Affordable Housing Coalition of just volunteers to inform the public about affordable housing. And we've set up two public sessions at the library. The first one will be February the 25th at the Peggy Brenner Room at noon, from noon to 1:30. And Rosa Ordaz, the community engagement manager from the, let me see, the Harbor, Harbor Lights will be presenting for 45 minutes about just the terms, what is affordable housing? What's an ADU? You know, just what all the different definitions of affordable housing are. And then a half an hour Q and A after that. And then on March 11th, also in the Peggy Brenner Room at noon, we're putting together a panel just to do Q and A about affordable housing. And we'd really love it, Mr. Shaw, if you would be able to attend on that or be on the panel on that March 11th meeting to help, you know, just to have some informal conversation among concerned citizens about what this is all about. And it will be Zoom and in person. So I just wanted to put that out there and formally invite you and see if you might be available. And I think also on the panel would probably be somebody else from Harbor Lights. And we were thinking of Chappa, somebody from Chappa, who I understand they've been the Citizens for Housing and Planning Association that apparently give good presentations on this topic. Just so, you know, we encourage people to come to the April 1st town meeting and, and just to give people information ahead of time on what this is all about. Cause it just seemed like there was a real dearth of information at the last town meeting. And so just trying to get some, some info out there.
Well, that's, that's very good. Affordable housing is important. It's, it's not, it's not exactly what the planning board is trying to accomplish, but it certainly goes hand in hand with it. Absolutely. And so, yeah, that's great. I'll, I'll check my calendar. And what is the 11th? Is that a Saturday?
Yeah, they're both Saturdays. So March 11th is a Saturday at, at high noon.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to.
Denise, you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you very much. I just wanted to find out from the planning board whether you are planning to present any articles at the April 1st town meeting. So for example, one thing that came up on the Conservation Commission meeting last night, excuse me, was the watershed protection overlay district article. Is that something that you're going to be presenting or not on April 1st?
Well, I think we're going to be presenting the, the article regarding the water supply protection overlay district. Whether it's on April 1st or not, that is.
Oh, you don't know yet?
It's not entirely within our control. And actually, we'll be talking about that. You know, further on in this meeting about.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. But thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. So we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which actually, which is the approval of the minutes. Yeah, we've got one, two, three sets a minute. We're actually getting very close to being current, which is pretty exciting. We were, you know, quite a bit behind, but Cindy Balcom has done a really good job of putting together these minutes. And as you, as members know, that there was, you know, we went over the November 3 minutes pretty carefully. So that's one of the three sets of minutes that's on the agenda. Let's, and let's actually start with, with the November 3 minutes. Does anyone have any corrections, additions or deletions to the November 3 minutes? Okay, wow.
Move to approve as submitted.
All right, motion to approve the November 3rd minutes, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Peter, roll call vote. Bob? Were you, you weren't?
I wasn't present.
Okay, then I want to ask you, yeah. Peter?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
And I'll vote in favor, November 3rd minutes are approved. And we'll move to the next set of minutes, which is the December 15th, 2023 minutes. Any additions, corrections or deletions to those?
This is the Simmons era. This is the beginning of Bob being here. His name is spelled wrong. Well, that's right. It is spelled wrong. Reober. Reober.
Reober? Yeah. That's my Spanish spelling or something. I don't. Repair.
I'll go to that. I don't hear anything. So.
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
Motion to approve the minutes for November, for December 15th, 2022.
So move.
Move, motion by Tom, seconded.
Hi.
Seconded by Bob, roll call vote. Tom?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Now vote in favor, minutes approved for December 15th. And last is January 5. Any corrections, additions or deletions to January 5?
On page two, item five, where it says about six lines down, Cutter is in favor of the letter, but the amount has not been settled on. I was in favor of the letter, but it's sort of in a miscellaneous note there, which is not made by me.
You mean that second part of that sentence should be deleted?
Right, but the amount has not been settled on. I just didn't strike. I didn't.
That should be deleted. Okay. Okay. Any other corrections?
Hope to approve as revised.
All right, motion by Tom to approve as revised, most seconded.
Seconded by Harry.
Seconded by Harry, roll call vote. Harry?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Tom, did I ask you already? No.
You did not, but it's I.
Okay, and I'll vote in favor. So the January 5 minutes are approved with that one change. Great, okay.
These minutes are very good. They don't much, it'll be much easier to do this when we have one set of minutes to look at every meeting rather than three or four. So.
I'll remember the meeting.
Yeah.
I'll be happy with two. I'll be happy with two meetings.
Okay, number three, number three. As you've probably seen, that's on the agenda, but the applicants, the applicant has asked that this be postponed to the, both applications, both the site plan application and the application for the special permit for the fill for 175, that those be postponed until the March 16th meeting. And, you know, I'm certainly fine with postponing that. We didn't have to, but they requested it. So it's, it's going to be postponed. Everyone has, if you haven't seen the plans that have been submitted, the site plans, please, you know, take a look at them. There, there is a lot here. And one of the things we'll discuss on, on March 16th is actually retaining our own engineering consultant to assist our board in evaluating these applications because it's just, this is too much for us to really evaluate. They've submitted a pretty comprehensive application. I have had conversations with the attorney, Jeff Angley. And what is interesting is that the, as you know, from actually Harry circulated some, some of the older efforts to turn this tool company property into primarily residential use, which just didn't go anywhere. And now according to the applicant, that the, you know, they don't have any specific uses for the property, even though they have, you know, specific requests for parking, which is a little unusual. But they did say something that I, that I found interesting is that because of the location of this tool company, the, any uses for this property have to be marine related. And they actually have an application into the state of Massachusetts to approve their proposed uses. And I, they asked for that application to be provided to our board. But that really changes the complexion of what could occupy this property in the future. It has to be marine related. And, and I think Gloucester had the same constraints when it, you know, had property on its waterfront. You, you just can't do residential. So that, that really is a game changer for this property because the later, the applications that were made, you know, I don't know, 20 years ago now, we're all, we're all residential properties, but that can't be done anymore. So that, that makes a big difference. So we'll, we'll see what happens with this. It'll be, you know, this will be a substantial application and a substantial review by this board. So just, we should all be.
Mr. Chair, yeah, Mr. Chair, did they happen to say where that requirement originated from?
Yeah, it's in, I wrote it down. And actually, give me one second and I'll tell you. Yeah, I, I didn't know anything about it, but I looked it up and it's there. Yeah. So.
Just, just while you're doing that, just as a matter of background, when I, you know, was doing the research on the approvals that were issued by the town of Rockport, it did appear as though there was marine use, there was approvals for a marina. There were approvals for housing. So is this sort of a mixed use property? So housing on the, on the hard, as they say. But they, they, you know, so all of these, these approvals came through at different times. They were extended and then they simply lapsed. So there's, there's nothing approved in sight today.
No, it's, in answer to your question, chapter 91, the Public Waterfront Act is the name of it. Under chapter 91 is the basis for their application. I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. We'll get their application, which will should tell us a lot about what, what they're planning. Cause I did mention to Mr. Angley, I said, you know, it's unusual to, to look for approved parking before you even know what the parking is for. I mean, is it commercial? Is it industrial? Is it residential? So and we have some issues here that, you know, that we're going to have to address with them at our next meeting about the parking. So anyway, that's, that's when it's on for next, March 16th. So that's actually a month from today.
Jason, I read through the applications. And this is clearly not a final plan. This is just an incremental step. How many times are we going to have to do a site plan?
Well, that's a good question. And that's kind of what I said too, is like, why are you, why are we getting a site plan with parking? And then we're going to get another site plan with the occupancy. It's, it's really, it's really strange.
To me, if you lock in the parking, then not knowing what's coming later, you've missed the opportunity to optimize.
Yeah, that's true. And, you know, and, and right. I mean, how can you have your, how can you determine whether parking is adequate? When you don't know what the uses are? Because use requires a different set of parking, you know, it's, it's.
Although it's.
I don't want to start, I don't want to start talking about.
We will, yeah, we shouldn't be.
Yeah, it's not fair to them because they, you know, they specifically requested not to be at the meeting tonight. So, but this, these are good questions and, you know, it's questions, maybe we'll have more answers by the next meeting. So.
This does show more than just parking. It shows what building remains. So we also know the size of the building.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So let's move on for that, to item four, which is the discussion, which we, we've already kind of talked about a little bit, but we, this is about having another public hearing on the proposed zoning articles. And having also kind of more of a workshop session. So we, we have our public hearing, but we also kind of have more of, how would I say it? More informal. Talk about these things, see what people's concerns are. I mean, I know people have raised issues about the parking. They've raised other issues. And then of course, then there's the, the multifamily housing mandate from the, from the state. That's another thing that we're going to need to talk about because, you know, that, that has some major implications for the town of Rockport. And I know there was an article in the Boston Globe just recently. One of the towns that is affected by this basically said, we don't want to do it. We're not going to, they, they came out and said, we are not going to comply with the mandate, you know, not mandates, but with these requirements from the state. We're just not going to do it. We're not, we have enough housing here. Thank you. We're not going to do it. So, you know, I don't know how this is going to shake out down the line. I do know that we, we're going to need professional help. And I talked, I should tell you, I did have a, a phone conference call with two members of the Department of Housing and Community Development, both of whom are heavily involved in the multifamily housing project. And and they basically told us, told me that, you know, if Rockport didn't have a train station, you would be under this cat because of our small size. We would be under this category of an adjacent community, they call it, which is really like a really small community. And if we were in that category, what we've already done around the train station is probably going to be enough. But because of the fact that we have an actual, you know, MBTA station, we've got a multifamily housing minimum capacity of 657 units that, you know, which is like, and 40% of those have to be within a half mile of the, of the MBTA station. So that, that's something that we need, if, if we're going to even try to do this and try to present something to the voters on this, we're going to need help from professionals. And, and that's what we're looking actually to, I've talked with our town administrator about getting grant money to, to retain professionals to do that. But this, this takes Article J, which is the turning the single family housing or allowing two family housing in the R District on the same size as a single family lot. That is really irrelevant at this point. And there's really no need to go forward with that article at the next town meeting. So what we need to do is we need to decide, number one, are we going to have this public hearing? Number two, I was, I was thinking that rather than doing it by Zoom, we should actually do it in person in, you know, a conference room that could accommodate the number of people, you know, have a dog and pony show with slides showing various things and answering questions in person rather than doing a Zoom meeting. And then the last thing is, you know, going forward on April 1st, this is, this hasn't been decided yet. The Board of Selectment is having a meeting next Tuesday and has to decide this because they already have a very full agenda for that meeting. And does that mean we're gonna, it's going to be April 1st and then another day after that? You know, the, the next day or, or whatever to do zoning. But looking at the calendar, we need about around 20 days between the time we decide to have a public hearing and the time we actually have the public hearing. We need about 20 days lag, lag time there. So if we decide today, like for example, all right, let's vote to have a public hearing. I'm going to get my calendar out. Now today is the, is the 16th. We've got two weeks is the 30th, 31st is the 15th. Oh no, I'm sorry. I'm in the wrong month. My apologies.
Yeah, three weeks.
Yeah. So one to the 23rd. The next Thursday is the second. And then three weeks would be, so it would have to be like, you know, the eighth or the ninth, we'd have to have our public hearing. And, you know, I was told Mitch said we could, you know, that room, conference room A, which is the big conference room in town hall is available basically at our, at our discretion. And then we could have the public hearing, do another report on the public hearing and then have, and we could actually make the April 1 meeting after that. We could do it if we wanted to. So that's, yeah. But we really would need to decide what we're going to do tonight. So I've said enough. I'm going to let you, you folks speak your piece. It's going to mean some work, you know, it, everyone's going to have to do some work because we're gonna, we're really going to have to put this together and, 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 you know, make a presentation. Hopefully that will answer people's questions and address some of these issues. I know people were upset about some of the aspects of the parking and let's, you know, let's talk about that. I mean, everything should be on the table, really.
Jason, I think it's better to have this hearing as soon as we can rather than letting it fester.
I agree. I'm, I'm just saying that I think as soon as we can, Tom, would be about, would be that week of March 6th, then it would be probably the, the Wednesday or the Thursday of that week. If that's, sounds okay to everybody.
Works for me.
You know, I mean, it means a new notice in the, in the Gloucester Daily Times. It means new postings. And then obviously, you know, maybe to drum up a little more attention is to, you know, have an article in the Gloucester Daily Times. You know, I don't know how else we could publicize it, but you know, we need to get, we need to get the people who don't come to public hearings, but come to town meetings. We need to get them to come to public hearings. We need them to get to come to, we need them to come to this meeting and say what they want to say and not, we don't need grandstanding. We need people who have thoughts and ideas and criticism because we want to hear it. Anybody else?
Has somebody leaving fast?
I don't know what that was, but.
He's getting out of Dodge. Yeah, I, I guess I agree. We, we should, we should try to make this happen on the 8th or 9th and.
Good, Harry?
Get as much information out there as we can. I am working with the assessor and the GIS department there to try to get, see what kind of illustrations and data we can get up and running here. I didn't update about that yet, but I think we're halfway there at least.
Oh, great. No, I know. I see you've been working pretty hard on that. And that's, that's terrific. Um, does anybody have any thoughts? Does anybody want to take a vote to have a public hearing on either, at what time, location on either the 8th or the 9th of March? Basically, we're going to have a public hearing on all the stuff we had a public hearing before.
Minus the step we passed.
What?
Minus the first pass.
Yeah, that one, that doesn't matter. And Article J doesn't matter because we're not doing anything with that. And that probably takes out a lot of, you know, controversy right there because well, while, while we're talking about multifamily housing and what is involved, there's nothing in our, in our proposed changes that would affect that at this point. That's, that would be down the road.
Yeah. So, so Jason, we're going to end up going through the public hearing process to get to town meeting on April 1st.
Yeah, we could get to, we could do April 1st at the town meeting.
I, my, my thought regarding public hearing and a meeting is that if we don't get to the regularly scheduled town meeting on April 1st, that we will miss the greater turnout of voters. Because we've proven that special meetings don't turn out voters. Turns out other people, but it doesn't turn out voters.
Yeah. Uh, you know, I, I agree with you, Harry. And well, you know, we can try. Uh, but we don't, you know, they already have a pretty full agenda. So what, what Mitch was telling me is that it could end up being, you know, back to back town meetings, which is not ideal, but you know, after the last town meeting where we couldn't even, you know, break a quorum barely.
Right.
You know, that, we don't want to have that happen again.
No, no, no. So, so if, if we, if we as a group decided that we're going to punt and say, let's say we zero in or target the fall town meeting. Does that allow us enough time under our action plan with the state?
Yeah, the, the action plan, and I, I impressed this on the, the two representatives who I spoke with, with the state. And actually, they're pretty, they were pretty sympathetic. Our action plan, when I submitted that, was prepped on the belief at the time that we had MAPC are, you know, doing, helping us with our multifamily housing zoning. And I, I think at this point, and I don't know if anybody else has any, feels any differently, that I think we've kind of, MAPC and the Rockport Planning Board, it's probably best if we start with a new consultant going forward. consultant going forward. And, you know, that so that that's gonna delay the the timeline that was in our in our action plan. And they understood that and they they said that was fine. Because we actually haven't, we don't have, this doesn't have to be done if it's gonna be done at all, and it may not be. Maybe people will just not want it. It's gonna have to be done by December of two thousand twenty four. So we're we're okay. We're okay. We've got some time, you know.
Then my my feeling is, my my opinion is, is that we don't try to push this based on what you just shared with us regarding MAPC and the perception by a lot of voters out there that MAPC is in the pocket of the state that going out and finding a a new consultant, and again, I don't have anything against MAPC, but it's as though they're tainted now based on press material that I've read that, you know, we we've got time now to perhaps target then April of two thousand twenty four.
For the multifamily housing, that's correct, but, you know, I'm not, I mean, for this particular town meeting coming up, we won't be talking about by zoning bylaws that will increase the density. We're just talking about the things that, you know, like the parking and the water supply protection overlay district and and the other articles that we never got to at the last town meeting because of a lack of a quorum. But we are gonna have to have, uh, you're correct, we're gonna have to have another public hearing once we get to the point where we where we have a zoning plan for multifamily housing that will satisfy the requirements of, you know, the state, and that's that's gonna come later. I don't know whether we need to put off these consideration of these articles for that.
No, I I I think it's better that we take it in smaller pieces.
Yeah.
And and basically allow for discussion and and hopefully create less confusion by having more articles to to be voted on, to be discussed, to be considered. So if we if we can follow that path, um, what, so do we actually need a public hearing for those items?
You know, um, I I think it would be a good, it wouldn't be a bad idea.
I don't think it hurts. I don't.
Yeah, it's not gonna hurt. There's nothing that's gonna hurt us by doing this, and I think it could help us. Again, assuming that the people who, you know, that people show up at this thing and and voice their, you know, their concerns and have a dialogue and and not just show up at a town meeting based on something they read on Facebook, you know, we, that doesn't help. But but we, you know, we, we're always here to change. If if people have a real concern about something, we'll change it, you know, if it's not. If if we've, if we believe that it's, yeah, they have a legitimate right, then that's what a public hearing is for. So so, Harry, just to back up a little, are you saying you're okay with either March eighth or ninth?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Jason, uh, you heard Laura Evans in the public comments say that uh, they're having that uh, community meeting on the eleventh, so this would be before.
Yeah, these these things have really nothing to do with affordable housing. You know that. I mean, you know the changes we're talking about, Tom. These are these are completely kind of nuts and bolts changes. So I I don't whether we have to be in move in a parallel fashion with uh, that with what she's talking about. I think these are completely separate.
It'll probably come up whether we want it to or not, so.
I'm sorry?
I said it will probably come up. The topic will come up.
It it could, yeah.
I I heard also that there's some sort of a time window in terms of when we can do this. If we don't move forward with this soon and we have to wait four years, does that ring a bell?
No, four years, no, I I've never heard that.
Okay.
And what? Um, Jason, did you mention something about uh, one of the articles involving parking?
Yeah, that's one of our, that was one of the articles that was, uh, we never got to it, but was one of the articles that I think generated some, there was a lot of chatter about that article.
I think the biggest thing we need to illustrate is moving from one and a half spaces to one spaces.
Yeah, I mean, I I think, and I think that's where you guys come in, uh, Peter and and Bob, you know, just show people you know, what this would look like. People need to know that. I mean, here we're, you know, here we're talking about parking for the Cape Van Tool Company. How timely is that, you know? And like, wow, the this could, this parking um, change could have, could have a significant impact on what the parking would be there. So, yeah.
Was that, I thought, I thought that parking thing was in either I or J, but it was.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, Bob, but it's it's pretty quick, it was pretty soon.
I think it's the next one.
J, J was.
Oh, it was K. K, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, it was K, sorry.
But I think people are confused about whether one, that means a maximum or a minimum, and we need to clear that up.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to show the rationale, we need to show some of the other points like leaving more open permeable space in yards and things like that.
Yeah, for example, right now, I think you have to have, if you have mixed uses, commercial and residential, you have to have parking, separate parking spots for each one of, which of course creates a big parking lot, you know, and that's one of the beauties of shared parking is that you don't have to have separate parking spots for them and and it it makes sense. People are concerned, when people hear about parking, I think a lot of people, you know, think, wow, it's already really crowded. Parking is really hard and rock port, and now we're gonna make fewer spaces. And that's kind of what they're thinking.
Yeah.
They, if they understand this more, they'll realize that it doesn't, the two don't really affect each other. So.
Particularly when they're off site, when they're off.
Exactly, they're off site. We're not talking about street parking. We're not talking about, yeah, yeah.
So Bob and Peter, ready for March eighth?
Yeah, I'll have to retool my thinking, just in terms of, you know, I was really focused on the the housing density, and this is more about the how the parking, uh, I was trying to illustrate very clearly how the the number of dwelling units per acre is currently in the various lots we have in the downtown district and the general district and 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 what we were proposing and how it's actually, you know, if you look at Bear Skin Neck in downtown, I mean, nobody has parking on on their sites hardly at all.
Yeah.
And we're 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 reducing the one point five to one, but no, nobody currently has even the one. So it's it's not like, uh, it's only for new, brand new, empty un undeveloped lots that this really applies to. And I was hoping to show on a map, here's the undeveloped lots. This is, this is what we're affecting. And and that kind of thing, just to just a visual on that.
Why wouldn't you?
Another, another visual is to step away from trying to teach people that we, you know, even though we're saying four units per acre, already we've got seven units per acre or nine units per acre, so the jump to fifteen is not terrible, but we should also show some of the kinds of things MAPC showed us before, showing how you can make more smaller units on the same size and still comply with two and a half floors, uh, twenty percent lot coverage, things like that.
I I would hope that we could actually talk about some of this stuff, but but not, but stress that it isn't something that that's gonna be voted on in a, you know, like the April first meeting or something. It's just to kind of let people know what, you know, what's we're thinking and what the what the requests are and and, you know, so they can understand what we're dealing.
Now, you mentioned it, we're gonna, we only have one more planning board meeting between now and March eighth, right?
Right. Well, we have one, I think, at the beginning of March and then, yeah.
First Thursday. So there's only one more meeting. We need to bring the in to the next meeting. Stuff for you guys to pick apart.
Bring what what are you talking about?
Material we might develop for the show so that you all can react to it.
Yeah, I mean, you can bring it to the meeting, sure. Yeah.
It's our, it's the only chance, because we can only meet any two of us at a time.
Right, exactly, yeah. So getting back to those two potential dates, does anybody have any further comment, either for or against?
What are we talking about in the after work in the evening?
Yeah, because people.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Need to, people need to get home from work. I wouldn't do it in the middle of the day, you know.
Some of us do.
So we could do it, for example, at you know, six thirty, six o'clock.
And does Selectman have a Tuesday meeting that night?
Well, Tuesday, this would be, um.
This is Wednesday or Thursday, right?
Wednesday or Thursday. Our off week. We we don't have a meeting that week. So it would be one of those two dates, and I would say just let's leave, let's leave either one of them as a possibility, just in case we have a a problem with logistical, with one date, we could go to the next day.
Yeah. But since we always meet on Thursday, it might be consistent.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
We always, since we always meet on Thursday, it might be consistent for.
Yeah, no, Thursday, well, I would say Thursday would be fine. Um, yeah. So, okay. Does anybody wanna propose that we hold a public hearing on the items that were to be considered at January, a January eighteenth meeting, hold another public hearing on those same items and a workshop on the multifamily housing on either the eighth or ninth of March two thousand twenty three at six P M at the Town Hall in, um, conference room A. This would be an in-person meeting. It would not be a Zoom. It would not be a hybrid meeting. It would be an in-person meeting.
So moved. Repeat that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Want me to repeat it?
Oh, no.
Motion by Peter, seconded, second. Seconded by Tom. Uh, roll call vote, uh, Harry.
Hi.
Mom.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
And Robert.
Hi.
And I'll go in favor, so we'll we'll schedule our public hearing at six P M on either of those two dates. So I'll, you know, preparing the public notices will be fairly straightforward because it'll be essentially duplicating what we did earlier with a few tweaks to that and and, you know, try to, let's try to get it out, the information, I'm gonna try to get it to the Gloucester Daily Times. If anybody has, anybody have any ability to post something on Rockport stuff? That would be a great place to to post it. Because it seems like that's read by, you know, some people and we need to just get the word out. We don't want another public hearing where the only people who are showing up are, you know, other public officials. That doesn't that doesn't help.
I can, I can post that, Jason.
Great, super. All right, um. Some more discussion on item four, let's move on to item five.
Publicity, could we get the uh, the uh, portable electronic sign to uh, publicize the hearing?
Yeah, the, uh, yeah, we could look into that, sure. That's a good idea. Yeah.
Or somewhere.
Yeah.
For those of us who don't do Facebook.
Okay, uh, we're off to item five, which is member items. Anybody have any member items?
Um, yeah, I do. So as I think you all know, that there are two seats that are are coming up for for vote, uh, the seat that I hold, the seat that Bob holds. And so we're just in the process of collecting nomination signatures. I've got, I've collected sixteen so far. But, um, Ross Brackett has graciously, um, allowed us to set up. Uh, I won't be available Saturday morning, but Bob may. Um, I'm planning on being there Sunday morning. Bob may be there too. So we'll we'll be, we'll be at Brothers Brew Sunday, Saturday, perhaps, Sunday morning. Um, requesting signatures from voters from the town of Rockport who happened to vote, uh, uh, walk into Brothers Brew.
Yep, I'll be, I'll probably be there Saturday, uh, Harry, in addition, but I'll be Saturday and Sunday.
Oh, good. I hope you guys, um, get your signatures quickly.
Looking for caffeinated voters?
Yes, caffeinated voters.
Caffeinated voters and we we've been known to bribe with donuts too.
Oh, better than inebriated.
To decaffeinated voters either. I don't wanna be, this is a
Transfer station's great for it.
Yep.
Well, if it's as warm as it was today, I'm 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 there.
Yeah.
There's always a great turnout there.
Yep.
Okay, any other member items?
I have a couple. I sent around the uh, information from this morning, a member of Chappa that Laura also mentioned uh, spoke to the North Shore Task Force. And, uh, it's an interesting opportunity to get someone to help us with community engagement on affordable housing. So you may wanna follow up on that.
Uh, Bob, when you say, I'm sorry, Tom, when you say affordable housing, was it affordable housing or multifamily house?
It was specific to three A.
Okay, that would be multifamily then.
Okay.
Just trying to make, you know, a little distinction.
Well, our organization is called Affordable Housing and then I think. Anyhow, uh, there's something there. If we want some help, it's free. Uh, meet with us, meet with citizens. Uh, interestingly, the possibility of meeting jointly with other municipalities who have a similar situation. She said she could identify who's kind of like us that we might wanna uh, compare notes with. So something to consider there.
That sounds good.
The other item is, uh, I met with Christine Milhouse of the Government Bylaw Committee on the exterior lighting bylaw, and we're, I think, converging on something good. We're still needing to do some work on the enforcement side of it, but, uh, I think that's coming along.
Okay, great. That's great. We we could use that. Yeah.
This would be for fall town meeting, I think, uh, when they bring it forward. Is it?
Hey, thank you. Any other member items? All right, we'll go to our next, our last public comment period.
Sure, I have a hand from Laura Fillmore Evans as well as Z Seppala.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we take, uh, Z Seppala's first?
Okay, Z Seppala, ninety-two Granite Street, can you hear me?
Okay, Z Seppla, 92 Granite Street, can you hear me?
Yes.
I've just started my egg timer for three minutes.
Okay.
Uh, you talked about public hearings. Uh, and you talked about the, uh, fact that you're now under the belief.
I, you have to speak up a little more.
What?
You have to speak a little louder. I'm having a hard time hearing you. I don't know about other people.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better.
All right, okay. All right, there's some confusion, apparently, with what you're thinking about marine-related on the tool company. Uh, with Gloucester, they had what they called a designated port area. And that was an area where the state asked the harbors like Fall River, New Bedford, Chelsea, Salem, and Gloucester, if they wanted to be a part of a designated port area. And what that was, was to preserve commercial, heavy marine commercial use areas to keep it from being encroached by residential or even recreational water-related activities. So there's a big difference between being what was marine-related in Gloucester, in that area, in the harbor, and it, and in the, uh, recreational types of water-dependent uses in Rockport. The other thing is, DP, DEP makes their decisions not on something, whether or not it's marine-related, but whether or not it's water-dependent. And whether a project is water-dependent or non-water-dependent triggers what types of hearings and, uh, what types of decisions they are a- allowed to make. If a project is actually conceived as 100% water-dependent, they don't have to have hearings in town or anything else. They can go right ahead with it. It's deemed to be a use of, an appropriate use of, of waterfront area. So I'm just gonna sort of try to co- calm down and, uh, end this quickly by saying the largest hearings we've ever had in town were on the tool company and the granite pier extension. The tool company hearings filled up conference room A, and people were backed up in the hallways up to the DPW office twice. The, uh, granite pier extension was originally scheduled for the police department, and they had so many people, they had to move it to the high school cafeteria. So there's plenty of, uh, uh, interest, I think, in those types of things. Uh, and, and not the necessarily affordable housing, but, uh, that, that, when issues are very important to people in the town, I think they, they come out. Uh, it looks like my time is gone.
Okay, thank you. Um, Laura Fillmore Evans.
Hi, Laura, Laura Evans, 77 High Street. I was just gonna ask, uh, is the bylaw for the Water Supply Protection Overlay District going to be presented by the planning board at April one town meeting?
Well, that's what I was talking about earlier, um. I'm not sure, um, we're gonna proceed as though it were gonna be presented on April one, but, you know, we'll see what happens with our, whether they can tack our, uh, warrant articles onto the ones that are already scheduled for April one, or have a second day. I, you know, I, I just don't know. It's not, uh, it's not in our control.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Last year, they forced us into a separate one.
Yeah. Toby Arsenian.
Thank you, Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street, uh, about the articles, um, J through, uh, R, and you said you're, uh, discarding J. Uh, fine by me. We were in the midst of an amendment I offered when the plug was pulled. Uh, it's my understanding, but you ought to, uh, consult with the town administrator and town council that, uh, it's not a matter of choice and that all the articles slide forward to the April first town meeting. Uh, there, either you or, um, the selectmen, but they wouldn't do it without your nod, uh, could ask for a vote, and it would have to be a vote uh, of the town meeting to delay the articles to a time certain, presumably the fall. I mean, you're dead right, you don't want another special town meeting. Um, on with what Z said about the chapter 91, it's a whole section of state law as long and as complicated as the one that governs the conservation commission's, uh, doings. Um, and, uh, I think you need to get it out and start suffering through it because, uh, you need to be on top of that, uh, before the applicants, uh, come to you for the site plan review. It's a separate hoop to jump through for them. Uh, but you're involved in it when it comes forward. You're the ones, uh, under those regs who are supposed to speak for the town, not the board of selectmen, and it's ungodly complicated. Uh, Z is right, that people will be concerned at that point if they aren't before. Uh, back to your vote for the public hearing, uh, you know, you may curse me, but I think you've got to retake the vote. I don't think you can vote to hold a public hearing without specifying the date, so perhaps you could retake the vote and, uh, vote to hold a hearing on one date and vote to hold a hearing on the other date, and then you could cancel one later, but I don't believe that's a legal vote.
Well, um, okay, that's, that's a, a point. Uh, actually, we've got our town attorney, uh, Amy Quizzle is, uh, I see she's in the, uh, audience. We can ask her right now. Because if it isn't, we'll redo it. If it is, then, uh, we'll keep it as is.
Hi, everyone. Amy Quizzle, town council. Hi, Toby. So, the vote was to hold a public hearing. Um, there, there is no need for a vote to hold a public hearing. So, um, normally what would happen, um, you know, what would happen is there would be something would come in, the chair puts it on the agenda. So, um, essentially, that's what it is. There, you don't need a vote to hold a public hearing. Um, Toby is correct with regard to town meeting. Um, town meeting, the articles were continued to, um, April first. And so therefore, um, we would need to continue them further, or um, if the articles substantially change, we could, um, you know, we could, the, the board could withdraw Article X and, because you're, you're gonna bring it forward another time. Um, the one thing to remember is that if you hold, if you do go to April first town meeting, which is what the continued date was, um, you are still within your six months of your public hearing. So, um, so I, I, I applaud you for, um, you know, for holding another public hearing and, and, and basically, you know, taking the feedback and, and understanding that people want to comment, and so, um, so, so I think that's great, but I, I don't, um, I don't think that the entire board needs to vote as to when the public hearing will be. Um, that would be set by the chair who sets the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, and thank you, Amy. Uh, thank you for that. Um, yeah, the reason, the only reason I did the board vote was simply to make sure that everybody's on board.
Yeah, no, I, I get it. I get it.
Uh, it's just a matter of being, trying to be a little democratic, but I appreciate that, and I'm fine with the motion that, you know, as we've done, I don't think it makes the, it, it doesn't sound like it affects the, anything about the public hearing. It'll be duly noticed. Um, and that's the important thing, I guess, is that people have notice of a date specific. We're not gonna notice the hearing as, well, it's either gonna be on the eighth or the ninth, we'll decide later. It's gonna, it's a matter of, you know, is the room available, you know, is it gonna conflict with something else? That's why I didn't wanna stick to one date now, but thank you for your insight. Okay.
No problem.
Anything else, folks? Uh, any other public comment? Okay, then, uh, we have a, uh, we have a, a matter, uh, that's an executive session, um, item. It's, it, it involves pending litigation, and, um, we have our town council here for that. So, for the rest, for the rest of the people out there, other than the planning board and town council, this, uh, we have really essentially finished our regular meeting uh, items. We're gonna now move into an executive session, a- and it's not gonna be recorded. Um, but we will discuss, um, just between of the board members and our town council, and then we'll come, I'll make a motion at this point to, we enter executive session pursuant to general law sec, chapter 30A, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Simes versus Town of Rockport Planning Board at, uh, Land Court 22 miscellaneous, uh, 000671. If an open meeting may have a, the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public, on the pu- public body, i.e. the planning board, and I declare that votes may be taken, uh, and that we will not reconvene in public session. Um, so, without further, uh, ado, let's,
Can you use a second?
Put to, go into executive session.
It's a second and a roll call vote.
Yeah, second. I need a second. Uh, second, second from Harry, roll call, um. I'm sorry, was there a first?
You were. You took the motion.
I did, okay. I didn't think I did, but I did, okay. Um, so, first, second, roll call vote, Tom.
Hi.
Uh, Harry.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
And Bob.
Hi.
Okay, um. Bye, and I just want to say one last thing, that by not entering into an executive session, it would be detrimental to the town's litigating position, so that's the reason, one of the main reasons we're going into executive session now.
And, and that you will not be returning to, um, to open session.
Right, we're done with open session. Anybody can sit.
Okay, the public portion of the meeting has ended. Please exit the Zoom meeting at this time.